So we'll rise to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome again, everybody, to another Red Hook Village Board meeting. Looks like now July 9th. We've got a busy day here at the meeting tonight, and as always, I'm holding a remote mic when it comes time for public comment. We would offer George as our host to move it around to the audience. Pardon me?
There we go.
I turned this off and it went away. Not a good sign.
Maybe it's too close to these.
Yeah, maybe. We're saying, we're gonna open up the meeting with a public hearing in a moment, but what we could do is hand this mic out to anybody who wants to talk.
Something doesn't sound good.
Anyway, in the agenda in front of the board here tonight, you do see I have an executive session item for interviewing some police candidates. I think they're in the building, but I wanted to do that first if we have to. If they show in the room, we can adjust our agenda, but since I don't see anybody in the audience from the police department yet, we'll move ahead. With normal business here, we do have two meetings in June, so we have minutes to approve for the main meeting on June 11, and then a workshop on June 21. They've been circulated. I reviewed them, and I would wonder if there are any more additions, alterations, or corrections. Hearing none, is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then, we had published, and we've been talking about this for a while, but I would move that we open a public hearing now. We're talking to codify the bus stop zones.
The bus stops here.
Is there, I would ask that we open it. Could we have a second on that?
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
I'll explain a little bit. Those that attend routinely know we're in the mode of shifting the Bard shuttle bus route and making an attempt to keep it off our side residential streets, and at the same time, we're trying to merge. Dutchess County Transit System has what's been known as a loop bus system that tends to ride the main highways. Once in a while, we do hear some side street complaint about that. In essence, we're looking to work with Bard, and we've created a workable solution, it seems to everybody, where we'll put a bus stop right here in front of Village Hall, one across the street in front of the old Firehouse Plaza where we currently have a parking restriction, and then one towards the corner of St. John and West Market Street. So it'd be three, and the idea would be the bus would come and stay on the main roads and then turn around to the town of Red Hook Town Hall newly reconfigured parking lot. So we've talked with the Highway Department and talked with Bard, and I have had talks with, I guess I would call him the acting director at Dutchess County Transit, the person we had met back in December, John Ando, is no longer with the county, and that was one reason we were not hearing back, so we finally had to reach out. But the transit folks, it was interesting, they did indicate, they have those colorful little about five-inch square stops, number of stop on poles here and there. They have no problem with rotating it down to the one we'll put here, but they did ask at the outcome of our meeting tonight that we let them know, because it's very GPS site specific, where they would actually adjust the latitude and longitude, whatever that is, 100 feet, to bring it over here. But I think that stop still makes sense. It takes the parking lot, the kiosk, and the benches, they're all usable right in the same stop area. And like we said at other meetings and in some workshops, for the Bard student population, it makes the same sense. There is enough wide sidewalk in these points and benches and so forth, so they can still congregate and get on the bus pretty easily. Those are the underlying facts. In your packets are the actual resolution. What it would involve is changing our local law to add where we have stop signs and speed limits in that section of our vehicle and traffic codes. We would do an amendment that would specifically define the geographical spots, so if somebody did park there, the police would have the enforcement authority to issue a ticket, and it would hold up instead of just a nominal sign and a no-code component. So anyway, just for those out there, what we're looking at is on Route 9 in front of Village Hall, on the west side of Route 9, there'd be a 45-feet strip just south of Prince Street on Route 9. On the east side of Route 9 by Firehouse Plaza, it'd be a 45-foot strip south of the marker sign that's there now. And on Route 199, which is also West Market, on the northbound side, there'd be a 45-foot strip just east of the intersection of St. John Street. If you look at the paper we circulated, it appears twice. It's the way council wrote it up for us. We won't vote at this moment, but that's the details, so we would open up to public comment and any board comment.
I have comment.
What's your comment?
A question, basically. Will we be locating or relocating some of those trash receptacles and ashtrays that are currently over at the current bus stop or village parking lot over here, just to minimize the amount of refuse and/or add another one? Or, I mean, it's a nice spot over there, but it's not pending on this law, but I'm just saying for...
I know we have a smaller, single trash receptacle here.
This seems to get a lot of use over there and...
Yeah. My feeling that one looks a little too big for out here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little bit...
We'll play it by ear and see what it...
See how it works, yes. That'd be my thought. But good, as far as ashtray, is there an ashtray over there now?
Yeah.
We could move over somewhere, I think.
It was donated by Bard. Maybe they could donate another one if they have one around.
Yeah, that would probably fit somewhere here. Thank you. All right. Hearing no questions from the audience. We'll discuss it more later in the agenda. We'll have time to look it over and vote on it, too, but like I said earlier, the board, it's not the first time the board's talking about this or thinking about it. It's been about a two-month cycle, and what we're trying to do is time it out. Right now, we have the benefit of the summer season, and Bard is not running as many shuttles or the size shuttle that's having trouble on the side streets. So this'll, if we work and get this done tonight, we can talk to Bard Transit and get, because they said they would modify their schedule, and this is a good time, August, July and August, they're not in session until like mid-August, the freshmen come back. And I don't think too many freshmen actually live in the village, so there'd be more coming in for business reasons and so forth. But with that being said, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Move to our regular business. Like we said, today's July 9, and I think tax payments were due by July 1, so we do have a fair, fairly attractive balance in the general fund account at the moment. Cindy, do you want to go through it? Want me to go through? I'll do that for you.
I'll do it.
Okay. As of July 9, the treasurer indicates general fund balance 1,007,1,861. We could do a little betting on how long it'll stay over a million, but it's good to see it over a million for a month or two, anyway. Water fund balance was $118,682. Trust and agency, $33,999. Material management, looks like it perked up a little bit, $2,260. Petty cash, $75. Village green, $4,404. Hardscrabble, $4,623. Health insurance, $2,362. As far as expenses, I think they look a little lighter than normal, because we did have some, and then in June 11, we paid a lot a month end, and let's see, so it's, it is a little bit lighter to me. General fund, we spent $98,760. Water fund, $11,399. Trust and agency, $33,999. Materials management, $1,859.16. We're working on in the treasurer world with the EV charging station, we did utilize that line of credit with Salisbury Bank today for the $9,200 to pay the contractor that put it in.
A couple vouchers there.
Yeah.
Did those, did the grant apply to those?
Yeah.
Or is that our in-kind services?
There's a surplus, we have more in the grant than the 9,000, and like we had mentioned, there's some miscellaneous ones, and Cindy's created a file for the signs and different things.
And then we'll also get, the Highway Department will give us the in-kind labor and machine
time costs, and then we'll submit a package to DEC to get reimbursed. But that was good. And then I think Cindy, you did report, we did get the FEMA money from the feds. Did anything come in from the state yet, the state component? It was like, no, okay.
Just to let people remind them, though, that any tax payments that come in that aren't dated July 1st will be returned.
Returned? Yeah. Oh, that's right, yeah.
Quite a few have been going back.
What does that mean? Then they have to go through the county?
Well, that's because they have, no. After July 1st, they have to pay 5% penalty, and they're coming in without penalty.
Oh.
So the FEMA money, is there an accounting of that somewhere in our budget report, or because we're, some of that money is to go back into the highway, right, for the truck?
Yeah.
It will be.
That would be, I'm sure it is.
I don't know where, I forget where you logged it in.
It's in there.
Yeah.
In the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, what Brent's referring to is when we bought the large snowplow, we allocated most of the FEMA money. We have it in a resolution somewhere, but yeah, that'll happen.
Okay.
And other than that, it's kind of a pleasing report, I think. I know July 31 is usually our first deadline to submit our AUD. I don't see how we're gonna make July 31.
Oh, and I already asked for an, we got an extension of 60 days approval.
Six of 60. I don't know if you could hear that out there, but they give us 60 days to close a year and do all the accounting, which is almost impossible even at our size. And then, so another 60 days would be, what, July plus two is September 9th, month, yeah, it's September. So we'll have to push to get that part done. Okay, I would ask that we approve the treasurer's submission. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Police, and let's see, I guess I'll go next. For the month of June, I have a police report, and I have, earlier today, a representative from the Red Hook Fire Company dropped off their monthly report, which is great, so I'll do both. And in the month of June, for police, we had 335 incidents, breaks out 244 in the village of Red Hook, 82 in the town, and nine in Tivoli. Resulted in tickets being issued for a count of 85, and it breaks out 45 for the village. One of those is a parking ticket. And then, in the town of Red Hook, 40 arrests, with 22, breaks out 11 in the village of Red Hook and 11 in the town of Red Hook. I went through it, and I thought I'd give a little commentary here. I had a rather disturbing and revolting development this week. I was out of town for family business for four or five days, and as you all know, I drive my nice Saab with wonderful European tires on it, and I came home to find not one, not two, but three flat tires as it sat in my driveway. And I take good care of my car, the tires are two years old, and I was a little bit chagrined at what could happen. I know it was really hot when I was gone, and I figured, well, so I used my AAA card and got a H&amp;N, came up, and within 40 minutes, filled in full air. I figured, well, if I rode over something, maybe I'd get myself down to Mavis where I buy my tires and see what happened. I get down to Mavis, and no sooner I pull in and the tires are flat again. I'm like, what? And I look, they take it in, they call me later, they say, hey, somebody apparently attacked the sidewalls on your tires with a sharp instrument. I was like, oh. The reason I bring it up is it's now a matter of investigation for our Red Hook Police Department, and they're out canvassing the neighborhood. I really am torn. It's two things, it's either a very ill-conceived prank by a young, you know, person who had nothing better to do, or it's something targeting an elected official in the village. And as you all know, we take our job seriously, and the way to talk to elected officials is call us on the phone, come to see us in our offices. There's no really approved method of communication by coming at somebody's personal property on their personal homestead. That's crossing a line. And again, it's not clear just who or what it's about, but Red Hook's a small place, and I'm sure we'll figure it out. And again, whether it's, like I said, the young, ill-intentioned juvenile who doesn't know any better, or somebody trying to send a message, the message is, yeah, we're still doing our job, and it's really inappropriate to trespass and to damage property. And if, I just want to put that out there, I find it very disturbing, and we will look into it, and we'll take proper steps if we apprehend somebody. That being said, on the fire company side of things, they dropped off the nice computer run, which I got a chance to analyze. It came in early enough today, and we are building that spreadsheet, which helps us with the contractual review with the town and so forth. As far as the gross count, like the police report, it breaks out a total of 85 calls for the month of June, and this is for town and village. Sub breakout of the gross numbers, 24 fire calls and 61 EMS. And what I do is I go through it manually and pull out what are clearly village addresses, and that breaks out 29 total village calls. Four would be automatic alarm, alarm system activation type things, and three would fall into the category of fire, but fortunately, none of them were really disaster, or in the end, it was like something was shorting, or you know, something where getting there and looking at it prevented a problem. So if you take the alarm and the true fire-type calls, that's four, and a three, it's seven come off the 29 village calls, that leaves 22 EMS calls. I don't know if it was, it didn't really get that hot until July, but it seemed like a lot of EMS calls as you go through. It tends to be their main call basis, but it just seemed like a lot of them, like I said, 22, 29 were EMS. And what I do is I'll put this into our spreadsheet and look at that town to village pro ratio to make sure we're sharing costs equally or effectively. And let's see, who's got a phone near them? Jake, could you dial 210 and see if they have a candidate upstairs? Because one of my other roles is personnel here, so. If you hit 210, could you just see if Patrick wants to, if he's up there?
Any candidates up there that need to come down, or you're good? You want them just in executive session?
Log them up if they're there. Are they there?
Yeah, we'll come up there then when we're ready.
Okay.
All right. Later.
Thanks. Yeah, a few minutes ago, they weren't answering the phones, so. What we could do, we did police, we did the fire. What I'd like to do, if the audience would bear with us, and the Panda operator, we'll probably leave the room for about 10 minutes to go into executive session. He's the new operator. You could turn it off, and when we come back, we'll do that. But I would ask for a motion to go into executive session to deal with the hiring and employment decisions regarding individual police candidates.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So we'll be back in shortly. Okay, the board's back from executive session. Could we have a motion to resume, well, we'll close executive and resume regular session? Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay, we were off talking to the sergeant and some prospective police part-time employees, and we listened to background and employment history, things that are copacetic to executive session, and I would ask the board to work with this now. We're talking about part-time, which they're only paid if they're on a shift. In this case, both are, will require field training, and we have training officers here that'll comply with required state regs and rules. Applicant one has met my test, Luke McIntosh, and applicant two, Robert Green likewise, has met what I would like to see in our officers. We ask them good questions and hard questions, and they have passed internal background checks and so forth. Since it's a formal official position with the village of Red Hook that requires a vote by the board, and then actually an oath swearing tomorrow or something with the clerk, there'll be, there are police union contracts, and you fit into a certain niche in the contract, which management can explain to you, but tonight, I thought we'd try to get a vote and get you, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting this way, if the board concurs. I would put a motion on the floor that we hire Luke McIntosh and Robert Green as part-time Red Hook village police officers in accord with contract provisions and any civil service regulations that apply. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, guys, congratulations. Welcome aboard, and we'll probably see you tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Get them, Pat.
But thanks. We look forward to working with you, and be well.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we were done with treasurer, we were done with police and fire. Looks like Mr. Trustee Trapp is next on the agenda here for planning and zoning reports, veteran affairs, and any emergency services you want to talk about.
Let's see here. I'll start off. I mentioned last month at the meeting that I was looking at a couple of opportunities for fire grants, and there appear to be some, some equipment monies out there. It's almost like a donation from an entity in Connecticut that I'm having some conversations with, and it's sort of an as-need. It's not you get a grant money, you say, what are you looking for? And then they have certain equipment that they can supply you with, and I'm working on that. Found out that there are still some intermunicipal monies out there, especially for courts and things like that. One of the municipalities that I'm involved with, they want to sort of merge some courts, and there's upwards of $400,000 available per, per action to merge courts and things like that. So there's, there's some money going around out there that I think is available. Not sure how we sort of wedge into some of it, but it could be possible, you know, if we find out something that the fire company is particularly looking for. So that's just to kind of keep that on the, on the agenda sort of floating around. This Thursday, Dutchess County Planning Federation Board of Directors will meet, and we'll work on our fall agenda, our three classes that we'll set up. Don't know what they are, haven't a clue at this point, but we'll try and figure out something coming up, something. There won't be any repetitive classes. We won't have site plans, and we won't have, you know, ZBA stuff again. We'll see what it is. Usually DOS does it and gives us a good deal. We had good classes this, the spring session, so, let's see, what else here? This month, they were in the building department, 12 building permits were issued, two certificates of occupancy issued, two certificates of compliance, and three municipal searches were conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop-work orders, and no court appearances. There are a number of fire inspections that if anybody wants to see, you may certainly peruse this. Planning board had one item on the June 4 meeting, a site plan was approved for 28 West Market Street. ZBA had no agenda, and the amount taken in past month was $1,493.50. Pretty good, pretty good take for a small village. And I think that's it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Trapp.
Absolutely so.
Let's see. Why don't we switch, Jennifer, I have, maybe, I don't know if you want to hold these up, but we have hot-off-the-press, a little color exhibit.
Okay. And I'll, I'll start with events, then. So hardscrabble day is coming. It's like in two and a half months, something like that.
Yeah, yes.
We're still working on finding our headliner, so as soon as we get that information, we will let you know. And our, our website should be updated shortly as well. There's going to be some changes this year with vendors and placement. In years past, we've been able to put people directly on Route 9. A lot of merchants are coming out, which is great, that's kind of what we want, so we're trying to have to be a little more creative with placing people. So hopefully, we will meet soon and get that going. Coming up this month, Tuesday, July 17, there will be a free band and choral concert by the Reinbeck Rheinbach Musical Exchange Program at 7:00 PM at Abrams Park. The rain location is the Red Hook Community Center. This event is free and open to the public. We have Friday Night Lights, which I believe is continuing on the first Friday night of the month. I have not been able to get to any of them. I'm always out of town, but there's always entertainment and food, and people seem to love it. So thank you to the Friday Night Light organizers for running those events. The Red Hook Library has a number of camps going on this summer for all age groups, including storytelling, science, art, costume-making, and theater, and a concert on the porch is scheduled for June 20. Materials management, I've been having, again, problems with my computer, so I was not able to update my Excel spreadsheet. This is a brand-spanking new year.
Okay.
So we would start from scratch on that, anyway. So hopefully, by next month, whatever computer issues I have will be solved. So I don't have that information for you, but we sold $4,000, $4 in garbage tags and paid out $1,091.59. We had 9.2 tons of garbage and 4.83 tons of single-stream recycling. As we've discussed in prior meetings, there's been some issue with single-stream recycling, that it's no longer being accepted by China, and we believe that we're going to have to revert back to co-mingled. We're trying to figure out logistically how that worked. Single-stream was such a game-changer. I don't remember how co-mingled used to work, so we're, we're working out the logistics of that, and once we figure that out, we will update accordingly, whether that's our guys do two runs in a day, or we do co-mingled, you know, the first and third Monday of the month, or we're working on it. But I think we have up until the end of the year to figure that out. So that's all I got.
Good, if I could jump in, in line with what Jen was just talking about, we've been talking about it briefly at prior meetings, too, but we did get a letter from Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency dated June 28, and this is what we were talking to them about. It looks like they were waiting for their board. They're a quasi-autonomous government entity over there, and I've been talking to the executive director, but he put this in writing. It's kind of interesting, his initials after his name are PE, which we know would be an engineer, then there's BCEE, a QEP, and an MPA.
What is it, Brent?
MPA is probably Masters Public Administration, but QEP, I don't know. Anybody in the audience? Sounds like a British royalty title, right? But in synopsis and summary, they passed two resolutions, and it flushes out with what we're hearing and what Jen was talking about, what they call Resolution 2445. The agency will cease accepting single-stream recycling at the close of business on December 31, 2018. And then the second resolution, starting July 1, 2018, the tipping fee, the single-stream recycling tipping fee will be adjusted monthly. On the first of each month, the rate will be set by calculating the average rate the agency was charged to remove single-stream recyclables in a previous month, plus a $15 per ton fee reflecting the agency's cost of storing and handling such material. So it's, it's not good news, it's the end of single-stream recycling is what it boils down to, and we'll have to see what the highway folks. One thing I was wondering, maybe Brent and all of us could brainstorm, is there a way, you know how the town has dumpsters and does some recycling on Wednesdays? Could we throw another dumpster as a hold point? You know, something, because the guys are going to be a little loath to making multiple, multiple trips, you know? The big game, they want to keep, what happened with single-stream was, actually contaminated the value of each individual product. When glass broke, or leftover strawberry jam got stuck on the newspapers, and the glass was stuck in the cardboard, it defeated the whole value of those products to be recycled. So like Jen said, we're going to have to go to co-mingled, where the newspaper's definitely separate, even in our trailers and everything, and then the co-mingled, which would be the cans and glasses.
Maybe we should talk to Dan, you know, see how he best wants to do it, because I know at one time, we did have a bifurcated trailer, you know?
I remember that, and I remember it was always pretty distasteful for a lot of reasons.
That's why, you know, maybe he would come up with an idea.
He was thinking, we had some preliminary talks, more put, you know, paper and cardboard would be once a month, and the others would be, but that gets a little confusing, like what they used to do.
Confusing, then where do you store your paper?
Yeah.
I mean, I go through, I mean, I have just junk mail, although we're, we're out of primary season, so the junk mail will be less, but...
That's what I was having, is there's something at the town station, but we don't want to have our guys loading and unloading by hand. Now, they just drive over to this site, and they just empty out a trailer on a floor, you know? It's done, and they drive away. So anyway, we have until the end of the year, but it looks like starting nine days ago, we're going to be paying more for, quote, recycling product.
QEP stands for Quality Enhancement Plan.
Wow.
Diggity.
Thank you, Jen. Let's see, in the water world, a couple things. Trustee Lang is on vacation, but I did get a water report and I might have to borrow it from somebody, because, thanks. We have system flow on the top of our page, average daily flow, looks like 207,700 gallons per day in the last month's cycle, which looks like it picked up quite a bit, as I recall, last, the prior month was like about 191,000, so you can see the curve popping up there. They did the standard coliform tests down at Smith Labs from three different locations and as usual and true to form, they're all absent of presence of E. coli, which is a good thing. And he gives us gallons of sodium hypochlorite used, average daily use was 2.17. What they've been giving us, which is a little too long to read here, but we have a new operator, VRI, and they give updates on different work orders and so forth. I do know Wednesday, I plan to meet VRI and one of these SCADA high-tech folks, because there seems to be some problem, the SCADA system keeps shutting down and they need manual intervention to get it up, so they have somebody coming in. We did, it's actually going to be Wednesday. I invited Charlie, but he's not going to be around, but I think we just need to get our own perspective as to what the new system really does and what it should be doing and we hear from VRI, but I just kind of want to see it and I think it'll make more sense so I can report back to you guys, but I'll be taking care of that on Wednesday. And later in the meeting, we do have the final contract, we're going to be selling the water to the Hoffman Farms Project. To be most accurate, we're actually selling it to a zone of assessment under the auspices of Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, so we did circulate that contract about 10 days ago and I highlighted, we'll talk about that later in the action part of our meeting. But that looks like the water report, which will then take us to Mr. Deputy Mayor Kowalczak. Are you ready there?
Yep.
I'll start with the Village of Red Hook Village Green Committee monthly report for June, the current balances of the Village Green Committees, related budget accounts as of June 30th are as follows. Community beautification, since this is a new fiscal year, we have $4,000. Shade tree contractual, $10,500 in the checking account. Just want to verify that. I have a number of 3,331.76, which is slightly different than what the treasures report reads.
I don't know what she has the number of town, so.
All right.
Which one are you talking about?
Yeah, I think some money was taken out for the bench.
What one took out?
The checking account. Anyway, we'll, we'll get that resolved. There were no Village Green Committees held during the month of June, and the Village Highway Department has prepared a preliminary list of trees on Village right of ways that are to be considered for pruning or removal. The Village Green Committee will review the list, I've already sent them out. We have over 20 trees that we'll be looking at for removal and/or pruning in various locations throughout the village, and this also gives us frees up some spots for our planting season, so that will happen, and we'll try to get the list verified and submitted to the trustees for final approval before we go ahead and get estimates from our contractor. Village Red Hook Highway Department monthly report for June, Highway Department is currently, currently picking up lawn debris and brush every first and third Monday of the month. I've been noticing, actually, they've been picking up on Tuesdays, you know, after garbage, so. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris curbside and separate brush, lawn debris and grass clippings into separate piles, and limit the side of brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with tree limbs and branches no larger than six inches in diameter, and do not include tree trunks or debris from tree maintenance performed by private contractors and/or professional tree maintenance companies. The Highway Department has prepared a list of proposed repaving, crack sealing, and drainage projects. These projects will utilize the New York State Fiscal Year 2018 and 19 Consolidated Highway Improvement Program, the Pave New York, and the Extreme Winter Recovery Apportements, and the cumulative rollover balances from the New York State DOT. So I did submit a list of the projects for the Board's review. Repaving, we're looking at Benner Road, Cambridge Drive. Crack sealing, we're looking at St. John Street, Firehouse Lane, Oposse Road, Park Avenue, and Maiseland. And then the drainage problems, we're looking Cambridge Drive, several projects on Cambridge, South Broadway, West Market, and Fisk and Elizabeth Streets. So most we have estimates for. The drainage, we're getting estimates for, so we're, we're already moving ahead on some of these projects. The Highway Department has received three estimates from local vendors for a new zero-turn lawnmower. Estimates range from $9,200 to $9,839. And we are also investigating government contract prices right now to pick the best deal for the village. The Village Highway Department and Water Department have purchased a jumping jack compactor for $2,700, and this will be split between the Highway General Fund account and the water fund, and this is basically a compactor to tamp down the, the material after they've excavated, been excavated. Revenue from the sale of scrap metal was received on June 12th in the amount of $208. This is our first revenue for the fiscal year. And since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $26,206.17 has been generated. And this money goes to purchase tools and equipment for the Highway Materials Management and Water Departments, and anyone interested in donating scrap metal, residents or businesses, can contact the Clerk's Office or the Highway Department at 758-8600, and Highway Department personnel will assist by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Intermunicipal Task Force monthly report and the Red Hook Infrastructure monthly report, I'll start with the sewer project. Meetings were held on June 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th. That's a lot of meetings. One, two, three, four, five, in the month of June. Right here at the Village Building, we meet every Friday, basically with the engineers and our attorneys. Excuse me, we've been reviewing and collecting easements from property owners within the sewer service area. We have approximately 10 easements out of a total of 135 that have not been submitted. Property owners who have not submitted easements may be subject to proceedings to acquire easements through the authority of New York State and Red Hook Village laws. I believe something is on the docket that we'll be discussing later on. CTBL has submitted responses and clarifications to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation on April 25th regarding the comments from the EFC of March 14th involving compliance with the recommended standards for wastewater facilities and the New York State Stormwater Management Pollution Control. Preparation, submission of documents required by USDA Rural Development, the letter of conditions dated February 15th are being finalized. Required documents from our Bond Council, including serial bond for sewer improvements and from CT Mail, have been prepared and submitted. Documents are being prepared by Rotten House &amp; Shaw, our land use attorneys, to transfer the state pollutant discharge elimination system, or SPDs, from the Red Hook Common Sewage Works Corporation to the Village Red Hook. Additional requirements, as listed in the DEC memo of April 30th, are currently being addressed. There's a lot of paperwork, these are regulatory reviews and, which are required before we go out the bed. We reviewed the Red Hook Sewer Project by the Dutchess County DOH, I believe our attorney has a meeting scheduled for Wednesday of this week with DOH. And the Village Board of Trustees approved Resolution Number 14-2018, authorizing the mayor and deputy mayor to sign sewer easements at associated tax filing forms and cause them to be recorded in the office of Dutchess County Clerk. For the Red Hook Village Water Project Phase 2, meetings were held in the Village Building on June 8th and 15th, and we're discussing the final closing documents in coordination with USDA Rural Development and Bond Council. We're preparing submissions for the last Form E with the full project costs, including the grant awards, which we closed on, actually, EFC closed on with the WIA grant, the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act of $2.28 million, so we had to update all of our final documents to include that grant. And we're also, based on our water report, looking at decommissioning still of the elevated storage tank and repair of the SCADA. If, the, if, no, this is all variable frequency drive boosters and the well pump operations are currently being finalized. On the task force side, both Charlie Lang and myself attend the meetings representing the village. The task force met on June 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th at the Red Hook Town Hall, and the task force is currently addressing concerns and regulations regarding agriculture and livestock operations in the town of Red Hook. We're reviewing recommendations for the Extraction Working Group of June 18th and the Red Hook Town Moratorium of August 23rd, 17, regarding resource protection, that's 6/23, sorry, water resources for public supply, erosion and sediment control, extractive operations, including soil mining, timber harvesting, and the study impacts of water withdrawal and surface extraction. And we reviewed the Red Hook Town Fence Regulations and also reviewed ownership and operation by the Town of Red Hook of the Red Church Cemetery, which they just recently acquired ownership and control of. I think that was it. Several of the other shared services and intermunicipal committees, the Red Hook Economic Development Committee, Ed serves as the Village liaison to that committee. EDC meetings were held on June 13th and 29th in the Red Hook Village Building and the Red Hook Public Library. Ed gave an update on the Red Hook Sewer Project Phase 1. There was a recap of the Town of Red Hook's local law C, regulating food trucks, the Hamlet Business District in Upper Red Hook, formula business regulations and amendments to the traditional neighborhood district, commercial sub-district. They're also considering the role and structure of the EDC, they reviewed the Marketing Subcommittee, promo project status, and reviewed the master list and begin to define new tactical approaches, prioritize and create subcommittee members to work on specific initiatives. Sounds like they're busy over there, Ed. The Town of Red Hook's zoning review committee, which I'm a member of, there were no ZRC meetings held during the month of June. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, I'm also a member of that, there were no CPF Advisory Board meetings during the month of June, and I do not have a balance of the CPF. The Sawkill Watershed Community met on June 20th in the Elmendorf Inn. They had a presentation of the Scorecard Project Drinking Source Water Protection presented by Dan Shapley of Riverkeeper. Another presentation on Hudson River Drinking Water Intermunicipal Council, presented by Gary Bassett, who is the mayor of the Village of Rhinebeck, and the available sources of information for protecting drinking water, that was presented by Elisa Chai of the New York State DEC Hudson River Valley Estuary Program. The Northern Dutchess Alliance, I guess got put on that committee. We met on June 8th at the Red Hook Village Building. We discussed economic development strategies and implementation of the Northern Dutchess Alliance Blueprint for Economic Development in the Northern Dutchess region, and these includes municipalities of Pleasant Valley, Stanford, Clinton, Myland, Pine Plains, Town of Northeast, Aminia, Washington, Hyde Park, Rhinebeck, and Red Hook. And we also discussed involving and coordinating efforts with the local economic development committees, if they are in existence. The Red Hook Greenways and Trails Committee celebrated National Trails Day and opened the Village to Village, or as they call it, the V2V Trail, which connects the villages of Red Hook and Tivoli on June 2nd at the Town of Red Hook Rec Park. So you'll see, you may see signs up Linden Avenue, coming down West Market, Church Street, into the Village parking, a little purple round things with white hooks on them.
Are they temporary?
They're temporary till the metal ones come in, yeah. So in our, we did put charrels, which are indications for lane sharing with bikes and vehicles on Church and on Prince Street. And also to start a new committee with the Local Waterfront Revitalization Update Working Group, we had our first meeting on June 26th in the Town of Red Hook. We're reviewing the LWRP, which is the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, revise the existing, our mission is to revise and update the existing 1995 Town of Red Hook Waterfront LWRP to mitigate future climate risk from sea level rise, increased frequency intensity of storms, and then result in flooding from these weather-related changes. Updates will also address the expansion of public access while protecting sensitive coastal resources, protection of scenic vistas, protection of agricultural resources and open space along the seven-mile coastal area of the Hudson River located in the Town of Red Hook. And we also reviewed the LWRP Monitoring Report that was finalized in June of 2018, and that is all my reports.
Thank you. Just two thoughts slash input. One's on the big picture, we did get a letter, it looks like it's stamped in July 6th, I think it says there, from EFC, New York State Environmental Facilities Corp. It confirms a lot of the talking and even what we talked about tonight with Brent's report, but this is where they show Phase 2 of the water project. Remember those that have been around, it was a $3.8 million project? We brought it in at that 3721, this number, I don't know if you can see it in the audience here. And then we got that $2.28 million grant, so it took 3.7 million down to 1.441,500,000. So that's awesome, but what they're saying here is, the new note matures, they gave us some extensions because of the paperwork and complexities with winning that grant. They gave us till January 15, 2019, Mr. Brent there, to close with USDA, but we still want to do that. We're trying to get that in the next couple, three weeks or something. What that is, is like closing on your house. EFC is a short-term money, if you could read, read all the words here, they want us to convert to long-term financing before the maturity date, and that's, we're, we're in the process of doing that.
And just a quick footnote on this too, the WIA grant for water projects, the maximum grant is 60%, which the Village of Red Hook did receive. And also, we did receive another grant for the sewer project, the maximum for sewer projects is 20%, and we got the full 20%. So we are looking to apply again for the next round for Phase 3 of the water, and hopefully we'll probably July and August, we're looking to submit that, so we'll see how we stand on the grants.
It's really nice seeing 3.7 million, or call it, really 3.8 million if you round it, right? Become 1.44 million in front of your very eyes, it's pretty good. And that's, the WIA grant is with the governor and the state of New York, they put some more money in, what, a year, a budget cycle ago?
Couple years.
And then it put more money available for us to shoot for, so that was good. And then on a smaller side of things, Brent, I just had a question for you, when we're talking about the zero-turn mower, I did some more legwork on that this week. It, it is the Toro product and the Ferris and the John Deere product, the numbers we are quoted are state contract-type numbers. The highway folks prefer a 37 horsepower version, which is a Ferris, it's sold, sold by Conway, as is the Toro product.
That's, that's the biggest, the most powerful of the three that they submitted.
Yeah, and I know we did have bad luck, at least in our estimation, years ago with a low horsepower backhoe versus a higher horsepower.
So that's their preference than the Ferris?
Yeah. I didn't know though if they were expecting decision tonight. I'm not sure that we've tagged how we want to allocate and pay for this. It does mow certain well field areas, we tend to brush hog the big well field, field.
I think we have money in, in the Highway Capital.
Yeah.
There should be some money available at the water fund, I would think, for. There should be some money available at the Water Fund, I would think, for, you know, I don't know how you want to split it up, but maybe we can discuss that as far as, you know, sharing the cost between water and highway.
Yeah, I think we're in the middle of a mowing season. If we wait another month, August, will we have September and a little bit after, I'm not sure what kind of, I know it's, the current one's functioning, and when we talked with Dan, he wanted to keep it for backup, but I'm not sure.
Do things like that go on sale, like end of season? Like, I know, like your residential lawn mowers, you know.
I would think government contract would be consistent.
When you do the, it's a good question, but if you look, the retail price for these things, like 12,000, and the government contract's about 20% savings, so it's bring it in at high nine, mid nines. But, good question. What I was getting at, usually we declare something surplus and sell it off through the county auction mechanism. I don't know that we need a backup. And I'm not sure what timeline, is Zero Turn going to keep working for the next four weeks till a meeting, or?
Maybe we can try to put something preliminary together for the workshop?
I think we decided in July to not have a workshop.
Okay. So I guess we're going to have to wait?
Yeah, August, whatever it is. It's not that far away.
So maybe we can, yeah, I'll do some research on the budget lines and submit them maybe early so we can review them and have them available.
I think we also have some in that Highway Capital Reserve funding. Anyway, thank you, Brent. Let's see, so we did water, we did all the committee reports and department reports. Let's move to the business at hand. Or tonight, maybe if you want to pull, why don't we move to the bus stop item first? Seems to have snuck away too. Like we mentioned in the public hearing section, we've, pretty much by consensus and talking with residents and board, decided it's down to move the bus stops onto the main road with a turnaround, turnaround down at the town hall parking lot. So what you have in your packets is a resolution which will number to become a local law, which the clerk can give us a number on.
Three.
Three?
Local Law Number Three. Resolution what?
Was sixteen from last month, or your workshop.
That's from June twenty-first.
So in the public hearing, we did talk about the designated spots, one right in front of Village Hall, and then one across the street at Firehouse Plaza, where it's marked for some, no parking now, and then one by the corner of St. John Street. We usually have Mr. Trapp with his fine voice read, this is a short one here, would you be so inclined, sir?
Just hit the whereas's?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Okay. This is Resolution Number Sixteen in the year 2018. Whereas the attached amendments to Chapter 190 Vehicle and Traffic Code was introduced by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook on June twenty-one, 2018. And whereas a public hearing was held on July nine, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the Village Hall, 7467 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, notice of said hearing being duly published and at which time all interested parties had an opportunity to be heard. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook determined that this action to be a type-two action based on the criteria found in 6 NYCRR Section 617.5, Parenthetic sixteen, and Parenthetic twenty-seven. Now therefore be it enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook the following, which is the Village Law of Red Hook, Local Law Number Three of 2018, Vehicle and Traffic Regulation Amendments, which Ed spoke of.
Essentially, it lists no parking zones established for bus stops and related enforcement authority. And like we said earlier, essentially, it'll be signed, and then the police could have the authority to stand up and enforce a ticket that's issued there. One part, Jay at the bottom, I'll throw it in, I'll read. These amendments shall take effect immediately upon filing in the office of the Secretary of State in accordance with Section 27 of the Municipal Home Rule Law. So Cindy will have to do that.
Can we change that typo, too?
Where do you see a typo, sir?
Where you just read, this amendment.
These amendments, these amendments.
My copy is this.
This is my old copy.
These amendments shall take effect immediately.
All right.
And so I would move that we adopt Resolution Sixteen, which incorporates local law, Local Law Number Three.
We're going to make that Resolution Number Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. I would move we adopt Resolution Number Seventeen, which incorporates the adoption of Local Law Three of our VNT regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? One favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, what we wanted to do, let's see, we did bus stop. In, back to sewer world, there's two items in your packets. One is second phase of what we did at a prior meeting. As the easements come in, council has assigned them in groups. First time around, there was, let's say, 100 in there. This time, at the bottom of the document, it is, I'm guessing, 20 more easements came in. Just for legal control and reasons within the legal world, they want us to specifically get another authorization for myself and the deputy mayor to sign those. They take, what, about eight signatures per easement, and you can't do it that fast. They have to be all hand-signed, too. Can't use a stamp or anything. So anyway, just for the board, that's what we're doing here. You might recall, we had one with a bunch of different numbers on it. So we would call this Resolution Number Eighteen, I would suppose, Ms. Schrella, is that correct? And it's entitled Resolution to Authorize Mayor to Sign Sewer Easements. And, I don't know, Mr. Jay, you want to read a couple of whereas's there?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Resolution Eighteen.
Yep.
The year 2018. Whereas the Village of Red Hook has established a municipal sewer system to serve the village pursuant to Article 14 of the New York State Village Law. And whereas the village is seeking to construct a sewer system in phases, with the first phase encompassing the general business district and contiguous areas, Parenthetic, the sewer project. And whereas a map and plan of the permanent sewer project with plans and specifications for sewerage treatment has been prepared by CT Mail Associates dated February 15, 2017, last revised May 8, 2017, entitled Map, Plan, and Report, Village of Red Hook Sewer System, Parenthetic, The Map and Plan, and was filed in the office of the village clerk on August 25, 2017. And whereas, in order to construct the sewer project, the village has attempted to acquire temporary and permanent easements for sewer system components over certain properties. Negotiations with the following landowners, as shown on the latest assessment roll for temporary and permanent easements on each side of the following properties, has been unsuccessful. And there is a list of...
Jayberg, can I interrupt you? I'm on the one authorized to sign sewer easements. The first few whereas's were the same, but then, can you, you show the same document there?
We're looking at, that's what we're looking at. The eminent domain one.
Oh, I'm looking at authorized to sign sewer easements.
Didn't we do that one already?
No, no.
Which one is this now?
We just got this one?
Is that, is that this one, Ed?
Didn't you do that last time?
I thought we did that.
No, this is, this is the supplemental one, like I said, this is the new twenty. Well, let's see, could we send the clerks to make some copies of that, then?
This is different than this one?
Mm-hmm.
I was on a roll.
Yeah.
I was going to have to read it all over again.
The whereas's were tracking, then all of a sudden it was different, I was like, what's...
I was tracking with Jay there.
Well, she's moved off, this is item number four on the agenda, the Duchess County Transportation Council, we touched on it before, but they circulated a letter where they look for federal grants, and they're looking for ideas that are unique to our village that would be good to fund. And I know we always talk about certain things. One is the Amherst Firehouse Lane Intersection, which I think would be top priority. And then...
We're supposed to get a study done, right? DOT did traffic count, and they're supposed to study that, analyze, and give us recommendations.
Yeah.
The last meeting we had with the...
Which was, what, December now or so? I haven't seen any results, but I think this would be bigger than just the study. This would be actually getting real money, because that's a really expensive project.
And I think we're on some kind of...
Thank you, madam.
Long-term or midterm schedule for that one, but...
Pardon me, Brent?
I think we are on the transportation plan already with that project, so that would help us.
Well, let's go back. So, like I said, the one we're intending to read, it's titled Resolution to Authorize Mayor to Sign Sewer Easements. And the first, one, two, three, four, at least the map, plan, and report whereas was the same. Then you see the fourth whereas? I think that's where they veered off from each other.
Yeah, so I will start at the fourth, which says on February eighth.
Right.
Don't, I don't need to read the first three again, right? Start on the fourth, all right? Whereas on February eight, 2016, the village board adopted a negative declaration finding that the sewer project as proposed would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement would not be prepared. And, whereas the village has been obtaining easements over private property for installation of Phase One of the sewer project in accordance with the map and plan. And whereas the village has received the following partially executed easements, which have been reviewed by the project engineer and attorney for completeness.
And they run through a number, yeah.
There's a number of, a number of numbers here. We'll just say that if anybody would like to see them, they are available for your
So then on page two, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook, that the mayor and deputy mayor are hereby authorized to execute the easements and associated tax filing forms and cause them to be recorded in the office of the Duchess County Clerk. And like I said a few times, just to clarify for y'all, the first one had about 100 separate numbers at the bottom. And what these are, these are the easement numbers. They're all identified by parcel and easement number. And what happens is when they come in signed by the owners, they go to the box, box A, we'll call it. Then council and engineering look at it, then they move it to be cleared, to be signed by us at the village level. And what they mean in the last whereas on page one, when it says the village has received the following partially executed easements, that means the owners, the grantors, have signed, but we as a grantee have not signed. That's the basis of the partial word. So we would, once we sign it, what happens is we bulk file them with the county clerk. Council worked out a deal, I think it's usually, if you buy a house, it's 75 bucks a pop to file your, your paperwork with the clerk. They worked out a bulk deal, since we're going to be bringing down about 130 there. So we're trying to get a bunch signed and transported through the title company down to the county and so forth, so. So anyway, it's not that complicated, this one, but while you did think you've seen this before, you did, but for other easement numbers, so. So I would offer it as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Brent, okay. Any other discussion? One in favor? And then related to that, which sounded like you all did have in your packets, we would call this Resolution Number Nineteen. What we're anticipating and what we're working on, I'll give a little background here, and then we can get into it. We have a high percentage of the easements in, and on this document you guys have are easements that are not in. But I've gone through them, I've been involved with the day-to-day working of all this, and I've got a code here. Some you'll see are not in, save from what's called ALLEFF Main Street Partners. And you might wonder what that is, that's CVS, and that's the realty owning arm of CVS. They are working on it, but they are hugely corporate, so it doesn't mean it's not coming in, but it means it's not here today. Another one, Methodist Church of Red Hook, apparently their pastor left, they've had two secretaries, and their Board of Trustees asked for another copy of the document. So it's not necessarily negative that these names are here, but what council wants us to do is prepare if indeed we have to take any eminent domain proceedings to set up a public hearing to do that. And I think we're going to find that this list will be far shorter. I see possibly six that I think are, seven, but that could be cut in half by some real estate transactions that are happening. Some, it is as positive news, places are selling, but they didn't get the easement signed in time for the party A to sign it. So now we have to wait for party B to take full ownership through the clerk's office so things can be recorded for the sale, and then the easement attached to that. So, but like I said, council would like us to be prepared, because we don't want to hold up the bidding and everything forever. So the suggestion is we set a public hearing in about a month. And as a rule, we tend to put our public hearings with our regular Monday meetings, which should be August 13th. I'd prefer, my thought is, we should do it not at a regular meeting, because if it is, a lot of detail and a lot of time, because what will happen is, those who have not completed their easements by a certain date will be invited by mail to this public hearing. It's not just a public notice to the newspaper. So we might have five, 10, who knows, folks here with questions and issues or whatever. And I think it might be too much to load into a regular meeting night, so.
Will our attorney be present at the meeting?
Yeah, she can be here on Tuesdays. So I'm suggesting a normal meeting is August 13th, we could do our regular business, and then these folks, the parties at interest, will be specifically invited. So, and the public, of course, anybody else can come, too. But...
You thinking the 14th?
I'm thinking Tuesday the 14th, if we could. Because councils, most avail on Tuesdays, it'd be either 14th or 21st, and I'd rather get it done than not done. Yeah, I made some calls again today to folks that just seem to have, even though this is hugely important to us, and then they've misplaced paper, it's just a little bit odd sometimes, like Red Hook Central School, they own a property on South Broadway. Again, they're not in yet, but not like they're objecting, they just haven't done the processing.
Just as an FYI, if we do do the 14th, that's three meetings that week, because our Thursday workshop would fall on that Thursday. I'm not here that week.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we cancel the workshop, then?
It's two months without a workshop.
Are we looking at seven o'clock, then?
Well, that'd be my thought. I mean, we left some blanks in this form so we could discuss it and see what would work. I think the blanks are on the back page, let's see.
Yeah, the whereas's on...
But on Brent's point, I mean Jennifer's point, we could, there's no sense to have a workshop then the same week. This essentially would supplant the workshop, in my mind.
Yeah, again, I don't have a problem with three meetings in a week. I'm just letting you know what our schedule...
Three's a bit much.
Well, I guess we'll read through this resolution, but on, on one of the... It is therefore, it is a therefore, it's got to be published in five successive issues.
What are you reading there, Mr. Brent?
This is the last page.
Could you point out better?
What number are you on?
I'm on where, therefore be it.
What number?
On number nineteen.
And then, what number here?
This is number three. Number three of the now therefore be resolved section.
Yeah, that would be what?
It's got to be 10 days prior, so it would have to be August 3rd.
You have to do five successive issues, that'd be the entire week, right? Five in a...
Where are you seeing it, Brent? I'm not picking it up.
Number two.
Number two.
Sorry, I said number three, number two, I'm sorry.
So it looks like we'd have to go, our daily newspaper is the Freeman, so we'd have to... So it looks like we'd have to go, our daily newspaper is the Freeman, so we'd have to go to-
Monday through Friday, right?
Yeah, and then have it on Tuesday finally.
So that would have to be 10 days prior.
10 days prior is the third.
Not more than 30 nor less than 10. Less than 10.
That would work.
It would be July 30th.
That part works.
July 30th?
Through August 3rd.
So, Mr. Trapp?
Would you like to read the whereas on page one, and then I'll pick it up on page three?
The same ones that I read before? Is that-
Yeah, I think, just to say-
I just wanted to be sure I was reading the right ones.
Yeah, they do mirror the first few and then it'll switch. So we'll call it Resolution 19.
Okay, Resolution 19. So this will take us up to where the names start then?
Yeah, you end at the word unsuccessful and I'll pick up at the-
You bet. Whereas the village of Red Hook has established a municipal sewer system to serve the village pursuant to Article 14 of New York State Village Law. And whereas the village is seeking to construct the sewer system in phases, with the first phase encompassing the general business district and contiguous areas parenthetic the super sewer project. It is super.
That's the thing.
And whereas a map and plan of the permanent sewer project with plans and specifications for sewerage treatment have been prepared by C.T. Mail Associates dated February 15, 2017, last revised May 8, 2017, entitled Map, Plan, and Report: Village of Red Hook Sewer System (the map and plan) and was filed in the office of the village clerk on August 25, 2017. And whereas, in order to construct the sewer project, the village has attempted to acquire temporary and permanent easements for the sewer system components over certain properties. Negotiations with the following landowners, as shown on the latest assessment roll, for temporary and permanent easements on each of the following properties has been unsuccessful.
Okay, then we list parcel and lot number for a bunch of properties. But like I said, coding it and knowing the process, they will remain named in here in the document, but not out to the public. It's, it's a public viewable document, but, and like I said, most of these are in process and will be in. It'll be distilled down. But this gives us the authority, as of this date, these are the ones that could be invited. But what we'll do is, when we get to those deadline dates, when the letter has to go out, this will be a far smaller list. So then it flips. Whereas the maps and permanent easements and temporary easements are on file with the village clerk. And whereas the permanent easements proposed to be acquired consist generally of a rectangular piece of property for the installation of a holding tank and a 10-foot right-of-way around all mains, lines, and electrical conduits connecting the house and tank to the municipal sewer system. And whereas the temporary easements generally consist of the entire property to permit the installation of the sewer components. Whereas there are no alternate locations proposed for the installation of the sewer system components within the sewer project area. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to sections 201 and 202 of the eminent domain procedures law, the Board of Trustees of the village of Red Hook determines as follows. One, the village, the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on August, and we're saying 14th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the Village Hall, Red Hook, New York, at which time the Board of Trustees will review the purpose and proposed location of the public project and other information, including the economic, ecological, and social effect upon the community, and any other information, including maps and descriptions of the property to be required. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of said public hearing in the official newspaper of said village in five successive issues, honor before, and Cindy, did you work that back already?
August 3rd.
August 3rd. Which is not more than 30 nor less than 10 days prior to the date of said public hearing. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to send notice to each assessment record billing owner notifying them of the public hearing by certified mail. Return receipt requested, honor before, and what did you pick there?
The same date, right?
I picked the same date.
Yeah, August 3rd.
August 3rd.
Yeah. Which is not more than 30 nor less than 10 days prior to date of said public hearing. The mayor is hereby authorized to obtain appraisals of each temporary and permanent easement to make a written offer for each temporary and permanent easement for 100% of the value so established. So I'll offer that as a motion. Ask for a second, I just need that, we need more discussion, so I'll open it for discussion. What we need to consider here is the public policy issue. This is, it's not quite clear why a good percentage of these haven't turned theirs in yet. But everybody has to consider, including the people on this list, that it's a $4.9 million project. We have the $1.2 million upfront USDA grant, and we got the infamous $925,000 WIA grant more recently. We really don't want to spend project money on legal issues. Anybody who looks at this, in my opinion, has to realize it's a benefit to their property and to the economy and the ecology of the village. It's a triple win. And we just have to, in the next week or 10 days, reach out to these folks and get them in and distill down to who's really not wanting in. But it seems a little frivolous to have to spend legal money on, on this. It's, you know, the money should be going into the project or reducing the budget of the project, not, not making the project more costly. So even though we do have, we've talked to an appraisal company, there is a fee per appraisal, but we still need to get that reduced number of properties we're actually have to appraise. And these are not, we're not taking a whole property. We're not taking a building and the land, it's just, we need the 10-foot corridor if the pipe ever breaks, and we need to be able to come back and pump the tank. And what they call the temporary easement is just so that the gear and the truck can go in and set the septic tank and put the lines in. As everybody knows, a lot of it's directional drilling. It's all designed to be as least intrusive, and the whole goal is to not destroy the property and not make anything worse. And in, in the bids and everything will be, everything will be returned to the property level it was before, whether it's a parking lot or a driveway or a lawn. It's, we'll go with that. We have been very flexible in moving mains when people came in, and we still are, but some of these people just haven't even responded to phone calls. So it's, that part's a little puzzling. But with all that in discussion format, like the biggest policy issue, like I said, it's, we have a legal budget line item in the project, but we'd really rather not suck that down by having to be forced into some things that we don't really want to do.
And it is mandatory hookup, both based on New York State law and Red Hook Village law.
Yeah, and the economics, that second grant, we all know that $780 per EDU was based before we got the second $925,000, $925,000 grant. So the cost could drop, but it could push it up if we have to spend it on legal. So it's, so we have to convey that message, and we are making direct phone calls and so forth. That's my discussive piece, but I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts. So it's offered as a motion, and we had a second, and clerk filled in a date, so we'll, this will take a lot of attention to timelines and things, so. I think we'll call it to a vote. I vote yes, and could I have a vote, please? Mr. Kowalczek?
Yes.
And Wang is absent. Ms. Norris?
Yep.
And Mr. Trapp?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Let's see, it looks like number, we have contract authorization for Dutchess County wastewater, water and wastewater authority regarding Hoffman Farms. Again, the regular attendees know, for what, two years we've been dealing with selling water to Hoffman Farms. In the big picture side of it, we do like the idea because system costs X dollars a year to run, and if you have more customers, it doesn't increase that greatly, but we get more customers to charge rate against. We had some pretty harsh negotiations, what, two, you know, 18 months ago, whatever, with the developer. And the, the big picture part of it is that in the town, the project is located in a town, it's 102 potential units, it'll be built in phases, still to talk. They've gotten through the town planning process, and one of the components is that they needed water, and we were the ones that have water, which is good for us, we can sell it. We did, we have to comply with DEC rules where we have to prove we have excess capacity. It's the same way a village can sell water is if they have excess capacity, and we do. And that's all outlined and detailed in our DEC permits that the most recent ones received. The good part is, the developer, at their cost, puts in the main, puts in what's called a master meter, and then the Water Wastewater Authority will read individual meters in the project. We just look at the master meter and bill, one bill to the wastewater authority. We don't have to process 100 checks in, 100 bills out, four times a year. It's one big bill out, and then one big check in per quarter. I went through and highlighted, it's been a long process, like you all know, and our attorneys worked in the final phases with Dutchess County Water Wastewater Authority attorneys. So we're really not technically even dealing or selling to an individual private developer. We're selling to an authority, and you'll see a bunch of attachments, but it does state 102 residential address, excuse me, 102 residential units is the type of customer. They give a required gallons per day of potable water. It's a term of 40 years with the authority. And then, as their attachments show, it's considered a zone of assessment. And I highlighted, it contains that multiplier that we negotiated, the 1.525 over our current village rate. And on Schedule 6, a water bill will be rendered by the village at least once every calendar And we would still do our own source water monitoring, different thing. It looks like the authority jumps in periodically, checks for certain things they like to check for. If, there's some wording that if there's some shortage of water and we're diminished over extended period time, the same diminishment ratio would apply to them. And then the important parts to me are Schedule 9, page 12. The developer will furnish and install a master meter, coupling and remote reading device. The developer shall provide a place at the main delivery point acceptable for location of the master meter. The construction and interconnection installation of the master meter shall be subject to the review and approval of the village. And then, we want to be able to maintain it once it builds, so that's subparagraf D. The village will maintain and repair, replace the master meter insofar as ordinary wear and tear is concerned. In the case of damage by freezing or hot water or other external damage, the authority shall be liable for the cost of repairs. So one way to put that in is, if we suspect the meter's not reading right, we want to be able to go in and fix it and not rely on somebody else to fix it for us. The master meter shall be tested and calibrated once every five years at the authority's expense. Anyway, the document is the culmination of, I would say it's two years since they first came and talked to us. It does essentially answer everything we wanted. Those familiar in the board and the audience, we're also trying to do that loop where we can take it, and the Hoffman Farm project developers have gotten easements already to take it to what used to be the Ross property. And then we want to cross Route 9 over to Hardscull Plaza Baywright property. And the plan there is to have those two other developers, Ross and Baywright, pay all the costs for the underground piping easement. We would just take it back and we would own the main, the same master meter concept, whatever they build there would be a master meter that we would just bill the master meter number. But that's not, another bit of this, this is just getting, this does not make the loop, this just gets the water to Hoffman Farms. So, like I said, council's read it over. We circulated it out to you folks a while back.
This document was prepared by Natoli? Is that the attorney?
He's an attorney for the wastewater authority, and then Rich Olson for us.
Who did, okay.
And I have, it was a composite. I think a lot of it's boilerplate wastewater authority wording coupled with what we wanted.
Now, does he, okay, this, I'm just asking a question, we'll do that, I guess, and I have some questions, but I guess we'll do that in discussion part of this.
I guess we could do, what, Resolution Number, would this be 20? I would offer as a motion that we, on the, put a top sheet on this, we'll call it Resolution Number 20, authorizing the mayor to sign the water contract for sale water to Dutchess County Water Wastewater Authority, dealing with the Red Hook Acres LLC. We could put in parentheses Hoffman Farms Project at Old Farm Road, Town of Red Hook. And as listed in the contract on our desks. I would offer that. Is there a second?
Second.
Brent, what discussion would you like to have?
So as far as the process goes, so once we sign this, it goes, the county's, the authority starts to go to the county legislate, legislature to form a zone of assessment to an act of the legislature, based on this disagreement? Do you know exactly how the process works, or?
No, and-
I know we're not involved with it, but I'm just-
Yeah, it's not our involvement, and like you're alluding, it's like a sub-page one, they go one through four, then a sub-page one. It says, "The authority will request that the Dutchess County Legislature establish a county water district zone of assessment to encompass the full service area."
So that would be post this?
It's like that's pending once we sign this.
So we don't know who's signing for Red Hook Acres then?
I don't know if Richard Rang is a titled partner, I don't know, he's a guy that's dead with, yes.
All right, I guess we don't, well, you'd be dealing with this, but.
Yeah, I don't think-
Right.
And what Rang, I did talk to Rang recently, he's been the fellow we met a few times, and he said their hope and plan is to put some foundations in the ground in the next very foreseeable future, and then frame them out as the winter construction season shuts it down, you know, so they can do the, have something closed in and they can finish them up by next spring. And like we said a few times, it is a phase thing, they're not going to build 102 all at once, they're going to sample a market. But things we're seeing is that there's actually a shortage of supply for housing right now in Red Hook, so.
Rental housing?
Even bought. Yeah. Any other questions, discussion? I would say we've got the Resolution Number 20, authorizing the mayor to sign this, is all in favor?
All right, so we will get a cover sheet with, with that resolution on it then?
Yeah, I'll draw something up.
This is the agreement that you'll be signing?
Yeah. All right, we did the bus stop, we did the DCTC. I think we got through everything. Coming up on two hours, sort of our magic number. As far as executive session, we hit the one that really needed to do with least candidates. Other things we can do later, but one thing I could add, the judge did his normal repeat that court grant season's coming up with a deadline of October, and maybe the audience could vote on this too, but the town hall, they mounted a regular flat-screen TV on a wall, which could alleviate focus issues and things when I try to shine data over here. The screen, I think, could be truer and more correct to what I'm looking at on my screens, because sometimes I'm here focused, not realizing it's not the same clarity over there. So, but those are not hugely expensive, but I thought we could decide where to put it. It's, I know when Steve was here, we were going to move that item over there, but it doesn't fit there with the unit and the dimensions. You know, we could put it over there. Where would you guys like to look better? That direction or? One thing is, the panda guy could pick it up if it's over here.
He's right behind it.
Yeah, I know, but we ruin all that nasty.
And we can't see it.
He also told me he thinks he can get us a new server.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So he needs some estimates.
That'd be good. What Cindy just said quietly is, we use a couple of servers- What Cindy just said quietly is, we use a couple of servers and we could that, we could put that on there too. He can, yeah.
One giant flat pan panel back there, and then individual little screens for us here.
Live panel tablets?
There you go.
I wanted to get, I like the, I wanted to get what you call teleprompters, too.
There you go.
We wouldn't have to look at all our stuff, it'd be right up.
I could read the resolutions right in front of me, right? There you go.
So we came up with maybe a TV and then a server, and little things in your desk you want?
I mean, maybe.
The thing is, they have to be conducive to a court use, so if we could say the judge, you know, usually it's the judge here and the jury somewhere, but, you know, jury could use a screen if there's some evidence being put up. All right.
My suggestion, if you're online there, wherever you're going about it, make sure that you have mounting bracket that is movable, that you can move it out.
Angle it. Yeah.
Yeah. That was a comment, I don't know if the camera picked them up, but a suggestion how to mount it. I think you and I, we're not sure what that wall's made of, because the one in the town, I've sat under that thing. Sometimes I feel like it's at my own peril, it looks like it weighs 400 pounds, it's like, if it ever came off, hope the guy that mounted it right has got it.
It is.
Yes, you might have to shoot like lag bolts or something, have to get... But anyway, now we move to the public comment part. Anybody, maybe, this didn't seem like it was doing too well, but... Yeah, maybe it's picking up something here.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I don't hear nothing, no feedback. Just a couple of questions on the sewer. Is there going to be, is there currently a schematic available showing where the lines are going to be located? Like, the public can get a copy of?
Yeah, this is...
In the main lines, not to specify each house, because you don't know where that's going to go.
There is one for each house too, but there is up in the office, up in the conference room, the whole set of drawings, and, you know, also each property owner's getting a blow-up section of what we have on that master one, that shows where the easements are located. So it shows where the mains are, where we had put the tanks, the laterals, and...
Is there something like, we have the copies that show the zones?
That's true. Hey Jake, could you angle, hey Jake, do you angle his, maybe he could talk off the corner?
Oh, sure. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Brent was answering you, but one of the things, you might remember that term map plan report that we've talked about, NPR? That's up there too, it's got a fold-out section. But just to clarify, what it is, it's really designed to cut backlots, crosslots, so we're not tearing up the main drag.
Right now, I mean, essentially we have the maps that show the zones, you know, the...
Yeah, you're more than welcome.
Or 10,000, whatever, it's something, you have something that size that just shows the route of the lines projected.
Maybe not, yeah, I guess we do have a...
Yeah, we could show you, you want to come in some Friday?
Okay.
It's hard to see, that's small.
It's huge, there's, we have a ton of documents.
Downsize one eventually to that size, so you'd have a, you know...
It'd be hard to see the properties and property numbers.
You need...
Well, you don't need the property number, you can just, lots, because we're, right now, all the, the, once we have now, have the lots showing, they just don't identify who they are. But if we're actually in the zoning world, looking at something like that, we know where the location of that might be. And we're looking at easements, or we're looking, we're looking at a variance or something like that.
So you're saying for the zoning board of appeals, you would want a reference map of that?
Showing what your...
That's a good idea, because it does span into the general business district. There's a little bit in our 20,000 and some in the NMU. So it kind of spans most in general business.
It would be appropriate for the planning and the zoning board to have copies of those people want to develop. I want to put my garage, now you can't put your garage there.
They may be able to, because it's underground, but just to know where it is, it may make a difference as to whether something they want to do is feasible or not, like locating an underground pool or something, new owners.
Well, if they're, if they're the property owner, they would be required to sign the easement, so they would have a copy of that on file.
The current property owners, with property changing hands, the other question I had...
And that would be filed with the county, so when the transfer of property would occur, that would occur.
But my other question I had too...
Let's make it more public, it's, so everybody can hear, camera guy can hear.
The other question I had too is, once these easements are done, is the property owner's going to get a copy of an amended deed?
Could you say all your words again?
When the, you're going to file the easements with the county?
Right.
Will each property owner get a copy of a deed indicating the right-of-way easements on it?
Yes.
It can be an expensive thing, because not just letting them know, or them knowing about it, but they should have a copy of it with their records.
Yeah, they will get back a fully executed, full document packet, so once it gets filed, it comes, they, every easement has two copies, one will go back to the property owner, one will stay with the county, so it's, uh... But yeah, they'll get, once it's all stamped in and filed, yes.
One other question about the Hoffman deal.
Okay.
Are they going to fire hydrants out there?
Yeah, yeah.
So they're going to run through the meter?
Yep.
Okay.
And now a cover?
I wanted to know.
And so when they flush it, that will also run through the meter, so...
Okay.
Nothing's free.
Anything else from back there? Steve, you want to come to the corner, I think our hand mic is...
You know this process.
Steve Zarcheck, 92 Cambridge Drive, Red Hook. Brent, you said Cambridge Drive is going to be repaved?
I don't know if it's repaved or crack sealed.
Let me see if I can find it for you, Steve, because... One of our pages has it outlined here.
Yeah, it'd be paved, so there's two, yeah, 270 feet, so it would be two inches thick.
270 feet?
I don't know from where to where, but...
Oh, so it's not the whole drive?
Is this recommendation from the highways?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there's some drainage on Cambridge Drive that has to be fixed too.
There's a lot of drainage there too.
Lots of drainage, fix it.
On the front page, they have 51, 52, 75 Cambridge. Excavate, excavate, extend, culvert, wherever 50s and 75 are.
Those are two, two there on Cambridge. It's a lot of work out in Red Hook Estates. So we're not repaving the entire Cambridge, just probably the worst of it.
Yeah.
It's funny, crack sealing is not cheap.
No.
It's done by Farm Road. All right. That's what was interesting.
Thank you. All right. So we got quite a bit done, anything else from the board, general business-wise? Anything we didn't touch on that's on your mind? I think therefore, we've looked at the vouchers, we need a motion to pay bills after audit. Mr. Brent, are you ready to wrap up tonight?
I am, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll second it, all in favor?
All right.
Good night, everybody.